Y'all set?
Yeah.
Good evening and welcome to the June 14th Town Council Meeting. If you'll please rise and join us in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcements, just the upcoming meetings on Wednesday, June 20th, from 9:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. at the Carriage Shed at Buckley's Great Stakes located at 438 DW Highway will be a council retreat/work session. Thursday, June 28th, Thursday, June 19th, and Thursday, August 16th are regular meetings, all here in the Matthew Thornton Room, all beginning at 7:00 p.m.
You said June 19th, did you mean July?
July 19th.
Yes, I did mean July 19th. Thank you.
Yes, that's a me. Please keep in mind that the Rockin' Rib Fest will be held this weekend at Anheuser-Busch. Expect traffic delays, especially Sunday morning between 9:00 a.m. and 10:00 a.m. during the five-mile road race. There will be intermittent road closures between Anheuser-Busch and Horseshoe Pond. Please seek alternate routes during that time. The Merrimack High School graduation will be held this Saturday at the high school. Expect delays in the morning in the area of O'Gara Drive, McKelwyn, is that right? After seven years, and Babuza Lake Road. Thank you for your patience during this busy weekend. The Parks and Recreation Department would like to announce the start of their free weekly concert series at Abbey Griffin Park. People just love those, don't they? Concerts are held every Wednesday night and will begin at 6:00 p.m. The annual concert series runs weekly from June 20th through August 15th. On stage for Wednesday, June 20th is Ben Rudnick and Friends, which is a children's concert in partnership with the Merrimack Public Library and the start of their summer reading program. Merrimack property tax bills have been mailed and are due by July 6th. Property owners who have not received their tax bills should contact the Tax Collector's Office at 424-3651 and arrange for duplicate bills. Bills not paid by July 6th are subject to a 12% interest per annum. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. PFO updates. I apologize. Nope, very good. Anything on PFO, Nancy?
As we all know, there's going to be an EPA regional meeting at Exeter High School on the evening of July 25th, which is 43810, I believe.
June 25th.
And then, did I say June?
You said July.
Oh, June. See, we just switched it, sorry. June 25th and June 26th. I would like to request permission from the council to write some testimony to be presented at that meeting representing the council regarding the EPA impact, I'm sorry, the PFOA impact on the town, like we did during the pipeline. I think it was really important for the Town Council to be able to verbalize as an entity the concerns that we have as a governing body to the specific government body, okay? Now, I know Pete's going to be going, so perhaps the two of us could be together. What I would like to recommend or suggest is that I write a draft, send it to everyone prior to that time, get feedback, and then finalize it. I just want to know if there's, what's the opinion of the group?
I'm good with it.
I certainly have no objection. I think we've been very vocal about the situation here in the community, and I think it only adding testimony to the effect, asking the EPA to take it seriously, considering we are a community that has been dramatically impacted by it, I think should carry some weight, so I don't have any issue with that. For me personally, I don't have any issue with that.
And of course, if anyone else is in attendance, obviously, and I think that was impressive during the pipeline thing, we were all there, coincidentally, and I think it really did make an impact, so I think whoever is going to be there, we could all stand together and present it, so there'll be three of us.
Thank you, Sean.
Okay. So what I'll, so if it's okay with everyone, I'll draft something. I was intending to have something done for this evening and sent it out before the meeting, but I just didn't have time. So I'll do that in plenty of time prior to the meeting. Unfortunately, we don't have a Town Council meeting until after that, so it's not as if we're going to have to do it. And what we can do is make sure that that documentation is on the website as soon as it's approved by all of us, so that the public know what kind of testimony we provided.
Mr. Chairman, based on the statements made by Councilor Harrington, I would ask that the Town Council move approval over the request that she's making so that we have it ordained on the record.
Thank you, Bill.
Motion by Counsel Boyd, seconded by Barbara. Do you want to speak to your motion?
No, I trust Councilor Harrington to encapsulate some of the thoughts and the concerns that have been going through our community over the last couple of years or so.
And obviously, it will be sent out in draft form, and any recommendations will be incorporated.
And you plan to share that by the retreat?
Oh.
Wednesday of next week?
I can sure try. That's a good idea.
Actually, that's excellent idea, Counsel.
That can be a goal for me. I'm going to be away until Tuesday, but that's okay.
But there's a goal.
That's a goal. I will do my utmost, okay? That's a great idea, though. I should be able to do it, at least in draft form, for sure.
Eileen?
Oh, I'm really glad that you are, you know, preparing some kind of document because Kyle Fox, DPW Director, Serena Croce, who's from the Wastewater Division, who also have concerns as it relates to PFOA, and the affluent coming from St. Cobain, and, did I say myself? Me, and possibly Paul, and maybe one other person are going to be there just to show our solidarity, but we really wouldn't be in a position to make statements unless they were on behalf of you, so I'm really glad that you suggested that.
Okay, very well. Oh, we have to vote, don't we?
Yep. For the discussion, call the question. All those in favor, standing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome, Nancy. Thank you.
All right, Highway Garage Project Update is next. Did you want to speak, Paulie?
Basically, if you haven't driven by 80 Turkey Hill Road lately, there's been a lot of work. They actually, when we were there for our meeting yesterday, they were starting to dig for the footings. Today I was informed, just a few minutes ago, it looks like the foundation footings are going in. We're waiting for the rebarb. When the rebarb's in, then they'll pour, so it's moving along. The, for lack of a better term, the Butler Building, which is the maintenance bay building, is being delivered in the next week or so, so that will be on-site. And what we're going to do, what we're planning on doing is a two-phased approach, is we're going to start with the stick construction, which is the office space, and start building that up, as well as putting in the other section, or the Butler Building will start being erected, so we'll work from both ends and work in towards the middle. The project is, we were told again, will be definitely be able to move into the new garage facility, maintenance facility by Thanksgiving of this year, and then after we move in, we'll start working on the existing building. And there will be work going on in the existing building as we are, because we're trying to get both vendors, if the vendor's working on the siding, we're going to have them come over and do the siding. We don't want to pay them to mobilize twice, so when they're on-site, they're going to be doing, hopefully, both, as much as they can do, and they're going to coordinate the efforts there. The site foreman for our construction management company is now on-site every day, and they have moved their construction trailer in, so it's there. And it looked like a well-oiled machine the other day, watching these guys dig, put the footings in, and a very clean worksite that we could see, so project's moving along better than what I expected, and it's going to be done, hopefully, earlier, if we can.
Excellent. Thank you, Paul. Peter?
Paul, have you gotten any comments or been contacted, you or anybody else, from the Garage Construction Committee regarding citizens concerned about the buffer area? Because I saw on social media a few comments and stuff, and so I was curious if anybody had reached out.
Yeah, yeah, some of the neighbors have reached out, and we have went over, and actually, not, we, Lori has gone over, and Kyle, and explained stuff with the neighbors. We now have a fence that we erected, so that they're not seeing the construction as much, six-foot-high fence, and then we also put some temporary fencing up front on Turkey Hill Road, so people don't drive in to the construction area. So we're trying to work with the neighbors if they do have concerns, if they just either call Lori or walk over to Highway Garage and talk. We've been in constant contact with the neighbor across the street and keeping him abreast of the process and what we're doing and things of that sort, so if they do have questions, we are answering them at that time, and if anybody does have, you know, those kind of issues, please see Lori at the Highway Garage or call Town Manager's Office, and we'll take care of them and talk to them about that.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul. Nothing further. Next on the agenda, comments from the press and public. If you wish to address the council, you can use this mic here or at the table. Tess?
Hi. Lorraine Allen, 16 French Court. Very glad to hear that you're going, because part of my intent tonight was to give you an update on Citizens for Clean Water and some of the things in the last month. And before I say that, there was an article a couple weeks ago in the Manchester Union Leader that someone sent to me that kind of shocked me and perplexed me, and I said, where's this coming from? That the Town Council was quoted, and it kind of said that there wasn't communication from Citizens for Clean Water, and I was reading it, thinking, is this even newsworthy? And then at the end, it named two facts that weren't even true. And why it really surprised me is, I'm not here every time you meet, nor do you want me to be, but I try to really keep you abreast of, on our website, the goals are there. It's clear, it's transparent, and I reach out to reps and various other folks, and there are no secrets here. So there were two things at the end of that article that were incorrect, and I was really surprised, because that particular reporter had received an email, press release, from me before the summit in May about the issue of not having a seat at the table. It was very straightforward, and she said, thanks for that, so she knew that we weren't there. So in that article, at the end, it said, you know, things that had come to the attention that nobody even knew, is that we had went to the EPA summit. Clearly said Citizens for Clean Water was at the EPA summit. We weren't. We didn't have a seat at the table, and then it said something about the Region One piece. So I didn't know where that came from, and then, so I went and looked back at the videos of the last meeting and just heard that people, once again, communication is a little glitchy, so I'm not really sure what that's about. I have some thoughts, and I just personally, you know, whatever it was about, I wish, you know, it goes both ways. I wish anybody who has any questions about anything, email me, reach out to me, and probably I can clear it up. There gets to be a lot of emotion and a lot of facts and anything that can be clarified. So that being said, I thought tonight that I would make sure that each of you had a hard copy, because obviously you know about this in May. I wanted you to know that from May 29th, I have been actively involved. Yes?
Sorry to interrupt. What, the Town Council or myself had nothing to do with those comments at the end, that you're talking about seat at the table or anything like that. The issues were that there were several very detailed emails sent to Clark Friesey from DES with pictures and all those kinds of things of Watson Park and areas of concern and all this kind of thing. And so it had come to my attention that on social media, that we were, the town was being, it was implied that the town was not taking care of these things, and we had never received the emails. So all these emails were being sent to Clark, and he'd forwarded them on to me, and then I'd forwarded them on to Kyle, the Public Works Director, and he eventually met with some people down at Watson Park. But the problem is, we can't, we can't start by hearing complaints on social media, trying to dig up where the information went, because it never came to me, to the council or anything. And that's really what was being said, was that...
I got the gist of it when I watched the video, but that had nothing to do with Citizens for Clean Water, the group.
Well, see, we don't know who they are.
I know.
We don't know who you are collectively.
Well, you know, there's 174 members in town, so, but we're also all citizens, and people are going to do, have concerns, and we can't say, don't do that, don't do this, you know, they don't answer to me, per se, you know.
And nobody was speaking about you personally.
Yeah, just the article. The article stated that, so I kind of went, eh, and then I, I lost it. I didn't come after you and come in here and call you and say, what are you doing? But, you know, you can personalize these things easily. I didn't think it was really a newsworthy article, and maybe she watches the videos, because everybody's watching this issue, and that's where she wrote it from. I would hope that she hadn't called you guys and interviewed you, and that's where the article came from, right?
Of course not.
I'm guessing she watched the video, and that's what she published.
But I mean, certainly, if anyone in your group has any concerns, pictures, anything, the place to come is my office.
I do state that to people all the time.
Not stepping over here, going to talk to Clark over DES, and then implying that we're not doing anything.
Right.
It wasn't even an implication, it was a declaration on the, because I saw that...
People do make emphatic comments. I see it all the time. You know, before the MVD warrant articles, there were a lot of unsolicited comments from people I didn't even know half of them, and it was kind of sad that I was almost, I defend everybody in town, I'm a peacemaker by nature, and those comments then were like, why would we even consider voting on that? We can't, you read those, right? We can't trust the town. And I thought, my God, here we are saying we love Merrimack, we can't trust the town, we can't trust the MVD, we can't trust, so that I just, you know, what are you going to do with that? I just felt that, you know, also, you know, I will state to you, remember after the Litchfield meeting, the announcement, there was that issue about the GIS mapping, which still doesn't work, by the way, wasn't right, and one other piece? So someone informed me of that, who's an engineer and a very reputable person, and I sent that to you, that email. I didn't check it out myself, and then I retracted it, and then, of course, you forwarded it to Clark. Clark, could you answer, Lorraine? And then he said, it does work, blah, 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 blah. Oh, I should, I'm respectful, so, it works, you know, you should have checked it out. So I took that as a given. Later that day, I did check it again, and no, it does not load. It only loads in certain, I tried it on my desktop, I tried it on the iPad, which is what I usually work from, because computers, and it didn't load. The other question, whatever it was about where the alternative water tests are for the short chain, was in fact where he said it was, but it's very buried. And I said, I'm very sorry, that didn't disappear. So what was interesting, I immediately apologized, and you saw that, and then the answer I got is a little confusing, so we want to be able to clarify roles. I'm glad you're saying come to you first, because he then responded, and I know you saw that, and it said, Lorraine, I believe, it was a little, we have a pretty good relationship, but I thought that, you know, there was a lot going on that week. He said, Lorraine, please come to me directly and tell people to come to me directly. Eileen is busy, remember that? She has better things to do. And I'm thinking, by golly, you know, really? So it was a little, I don't even know, maybe he had all those meetings that week, because he's okay.
I guess I would just say, keep me in the loop, and then that way, if you would let people in your group, whatever form you use for communication, keep me in the loop, and I can, and if you're communicating with Clark, I can make sure those things are getting done as well, so I can, you know, I can push you to...
You did write those follow-up letters a couple times this winter, and I did note that. So I think with residents, you know, it's been a long haul, and emotions, emotions, you know, run, and I do watch for that.
I just want to make a quick comment, too, because I'm the one who started the ball in the last meeting. And, yeah, I don't believe, I haven't, I don't believe I mentioned names or groups. My impetus for the comments was that we have designated counselors here, who's really have volunteered to focus their attention on PFOA, because the rest of us have a lot of other things, but they want to focus, and they want to be able to offer themselves up for that.
I did clarify that a couple meetings ago.
And that social media, not just your group, but all social media, is the inappropriate place. It's, I almost don't read it anymore, because it doesn't do any good. If people don't have the nerve to talk to me directly, don't bother. I would be happy to sit down and have a cup of coffee with anybody, but speaking on social media doesn't solve the problem.
Right.
Whether it be any of us, but especially the two designated people. And that was the impetus of my comment during the meeting. So I think it's not just your, not just your group, and it would be helpful as people who do come to you, perhaps, would be of assistance to be able to say, you know, there's two counselors that you really should touch base with, because they're really focusing on that.
I do that, I do that.
Okay, great, thank you.
And also with MVD, when people say things.
Perfect.
Give them a call. Call, you know, Wolf and Dawn have said, we're here for you, have a coffee with us. There's a lot more, you're going to see a lot more communication there, there's some very good things happening there this week.
Great, thank you.
And I won't speak about that. But anyways, I wanted to be able to, for those of you who are going, that's absolutely wonderful, involved in this planning since May 29th, on the agenda, because one of the reasons that this happened, we are the first in the nation to have a regional meeting, and the reason that happened is on May 29th, we had a kickoff phone conference with two folks down in Boston, one woman we had talked to before and a gentleman, I don't know where he came from, but there he was, kind of facilitating the whole thing. That came out of the talks early in May about talking with Alexandra Dunn, the EPA Regional Director for, or Region in Boston, about how do we get citizens on record? How do we get towns on record? You know, DES and DHHS and all the government entities, I'm sure they all talk with the EPA, that's their job, but what does it look like on the ground, you know, in a sensible fashion, so they don't get out of touch? So we engaged with them in early May, myself, some of the Seacoast folks, and two communities, Cape and Westfield, Mass. That was kind of the core group, initiated this, and right after, the day before the Washington Conference kicked off, we were told by Alexandra Dunn that in fact she had received the okay for the idea of these regional meetings. So that was very good news, and then they told us the date was June 25th, 26th, and we could help plan the agenda, and I'm going, three weeks? Ah, bleh, bleh. So we did submit, we put our heads together, put a lot of time into this, a lot of time into this to really make it worthwhile. The agenda isn't announced yet, because everything in Boston has to go through Washington. So they've made changes. One of the changes they made as of Friday, that was just changed again today, this just to give an example of how hard this is, you know, I mean, I'm a resident, I have a family, I own a counseling center, I work, you know, it's like, bleh, as the rest of us. So as of this morning, I was told that if any of you registered already, you saw that, that it said you can register, and I'll give you these so you have it, because it's very interesting, and if you want to speak on Monday, that's the designated public site, you sign up for a three-minute speaking slot while registering. Well, in the original agenda was this kind of little bit of a meet-and-greet, opening remarks from them, and a few community presentations, and then open mic to the public. So that changed abruptly last week to, nope, everybody's going to get a three-minute spot. If you're speaking on behalf of a community, you get a three-minute spot. If you're a resident, just saying whatever you want to say to the EPA, that's it. So Alexandra Dunn kind of said she was going to follow up on that, and I thought, well, what's going to change at this point? This morning I had an email that said, so here we are this week, right, that said, oh, hey, guess what? Good news, and maybe bad news for me, you are a designated community representative that will get a 15-minute spot, do a PowerPoint. PowerPoint? That's something my kids do, ah, and have it sent in by next Friday. Oh, great, Father's Day, work, the weeds are growing, the whole bit. So what I'm going to do with that is, first thing I did is had a little bit of a meltdown, because I had a busy day, and then I thought about it, and I said, well, my goal is always for the voice of the people, and the people who can be there are the people who can't be there. So how am I going to do that? Talked to my older daughter, who talked me down off the ledge and said, Mom, just get anything people want to send, and you can screen it out, you're sensible, it's not going to be inflammatory stuff, send it to me, I'll put that together with you, you're a good writer, and we'll do this thing. So I'm going to give it a shot. There's resources here. So what I'm going to do is, I already put it out to a few people today, I haven't had time, and I'm going to also, in the citizens group, I'm going to say, what do you want the EPA to know? Now, if they tell me things that I don't think are relevant to the EPA, I'm going to, I'm just going to ask for whatever people want me to say, and then I'm going to gather it all, and I'm going to have slews of it, and then I'm going to go through it, and I'm going to pick what I think makes a good representation, and I want, so the goal is, I've talked to other communities about this, who are going to do this, and our goal collectively is for them to have a little bit of the community story, not the horror stories necessarily, but what people feel, you know, hasn't been heard. So I hope I can represent this community and do a good job, and have it ready in a technological format that I've never used before in a week, and the question is that day, who's going to click and change the thing, because it can't be me. So that's what I want you to know, and I, when I give you this, what you're going to see on page two is kind of interesting, is it has four actions that Scott Pruitt did announce on May 22nd and 23rd, is his goals for the year. The good thing about these is, we're all hearing them together. The state's hearing them, the reps are hearing them, the MVD, I believe, I sent it to, you know, Dawn the other day, making sure he had any questions about that he could ask me, and, you know, we're all kind of on the same page about this, because there's a lot of wiggly stuff that happened. DES from New Hampshire did an excellent, excellent job in Washington. I don't know if you heard that, I don't know if anyone saw their slides, and they did another set of slides that I'm guessing they'll be presenting on day two of the agenda. They came forward and publicly talked about basically the elephant in the room, which is the health study. I was so thrilled to see that. They had a picture, Brandon had a picture of an elephant on the slide, and he said, let's talk about the elephant in the room. It was phenomenal. It was so good. Every point he made are the points that I have been saying since when I started talking with them and other people also. He talked about the need to, you know, have the hazardous waste designation, he talked about the whole class being counted together, he tied in the health, because that's what's missing here. They're doing a great job with data and data points, they really, really are, and there's way more data points coming out shortly about dust across the street at Webster Green. We had a resident's home tested, who kept saying that there was buildup in her home, and she really wondered, she lived there forever. They agreed to look at that, and in fact, it's a little problematic, and it's, they're going to write a letter, and they're going to be addressing that. They'll handle it well, I'm sure. I'm not sure what they do about that, because there's air levels are kind of being piloted in New Hampshire, there are new dirt levels are there, and water levels are there. So this is a copy that if anybody wants to look and keep in touch, it gives you the links, it gives you the, even if you look at the registration form, even if you're not going to go, I think it's worth looking, so you see how this shapes up. You know, I think we really have to, I sent information to our reps last week also. I didn't hear to date if any are going. One said he was unable to make it. I'm going to have coffee with one of our reps as soon as we can get our schedules together in the next, hopefully before this date, but worse comes to worse, it'll be right after this date. I hope she attends, and getting community and residents just to know about this. So if you have any questions about this now, or at any time in the next week and a half, it is confusing, I'm sure I could answer them.
So would it be possible to get a copy of that presentation that you're going to do?
Yes.
Because I'm sure a bunch of them would like to see it.
What they will do is, they want to have it, and they will, they're going to do all the slides, they're going to make it all there, so it'll all be released.
Okay.
So.
All right, good. Thank you.
Peter?
So you have that set with you?
Yeah.
I thought there was, and I thought I saw a discussion in email regarding possibly a rep from our cable TV going to record this.
No, I, I had, I asked Eileen whether or not we could task somebody from Nick's department to spend two days there, because I felt it was important to videotape and memorialize this for other people that may not be able to make the trip out to Exeter, that they could actually watch it on TV. And I sent the email to Eileen, and I know Eileen's been busy, so I'm sure she hasn't had a chance to respond to it.
I'm going to, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm going to leave that up to you collectively, whether or not you think that it's important for Nicholas to be there, when they have, they, he could most likely coordinate with Exeter's, whatever group that they, media group, who are very good, I'm told.
That's fine, I just, I think it would be good for our community to have access to that, I really do.
So that, that request was made on May 29th. We did make it for all of, and to share it with communities. We have, you know, Massachusetts and various other places coming, hopefully, Bennington, some folks from Bennington are coming. I think it's Bennington, Connecticut, Rhode Island, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, that's five. I guess Maine would be the six in Region One. I never looked it up. You hear nothing from Maine, it's kind of interesting, and they do have some struggles up there.
We can get that feed, and then feed it to our website.
I don't have an answer yet from them. They didn't confirm or deny, as we say. What they did say is, they gave permission for residents to livestream, so I don't know what they're going to do on their phones, somebody, I guess, because they can't deny that, so I don't know that there's anybody from here that's going to do that.
Yep.
Right?
It is.
By phone?
If that's true.
Then you should be able to.
Nancy. Thank you. If it in fact is a, I'm going to make him and judge my button, I'll move it over. If in fact there's a live stream, what we can do is advertise on our website and various sites, the website, to be able to access it.
Okay. I think it's being coordinated by Westfield, Mass. They're setting that up as, they already did a page, and I guess you have to have a page to livestream, and so many, I don't know what it is. But I saw something there.
That would be great if that were, that would be the best.
Okay, so I will let you know, I'll email that information. So this is, this is here, a bunch of copies of this, and any questions that come up at any time. Because the agenda on day two is, I know what I thought it was, but it's not been approved by Washington. So, and we're hoping, the one request that we had made strongly is, in Washington on day two, they had no press, no public, and there was a heavy, as they say, industry presence. The opening was for American Chemistry Council. You know, we know chemistry helps us, you know? And we didn't have to have this whole presentation on chemicals are good. That was really, so we asked that this be about, or state leaders, or town officials, or municipalities, the people, the state agencies, or federal representation has been invited, all of them. And we asked that please, for this, industry had their day in May, we don't need the industry there, we really don't, because this problem, we're only going to solve together, we have to be sensible. And honestly, industry is for industry, right? So that was the request, and it hasn't been answered yet. So.
Thank you, Lauren.
That's life.
Thank you. It's a, Peter? If you add something, we went by it, but if you want to add that in, definitely.
Just because if you can't, we talked about it last week. But Bill and I were contacted by members from the concerned citizens, as well as some emails from a couple of the MVD commissioners. And we kind of put together a meeting for June 26th at the library, in which Bill's away, but I will be attending. It's, you know, and so it's, a lot of the involved people, just to discuss where we're at now, and where we're moving forward to. So that's the 26th at the library, so just a brief update.
What time, Pete?
Thank you.
Excuse me?
Time?
It is, I believe, seven o'clock, I got to look at my.
Are you, well, Peter's looking up.
Seven PM.
Thank you, Peter. If you'd like to further address the council, please.
Hi, Nancy Murphy.
If it's later time.
Nancy Murphy, 20, Brenda Lane. Just a couple of things. I actually, Lauren said some of the stuff that I was going to say. One of the first things I think that every time I come to a meeting, and I just wondered, would it be possible, instead of calling this a PFOA update, if we could call it PFAS update? Because that's more accurately describes the chemical class, because we're not just talking about PFOA, we're talking about PFAS and the other chemicals. So just to be a little bit more clear about really what we're talking about, it's not limited to that. That's one thing. The other was, I just wanted to update the town council, that last night I went to Boston to attend a conference on, I'll just give you the actual title of everything. It was at the Health Effects Institute, and there was a meeting of the Society for Risk Analysis. It was a New England chapter meeting, and we were, I was invited to come to this meeting. And it was pretty phenomenal. The speakers were Philippe Grangin from Harvard, he's currently in Denmark, and Wendy Higer Bernard from BU School of Public Health. They spoke about human immunotoxicity of PFAS exposure, and their title of the presentations were Insights Into PFAS Toxicity From Recent Research And From Previously Undisclosed Documents And Development Of PFA As Guidelines. It was a great article, it was a great meeting. Dr. Grangin said he will be, he was in Washington the day before, but he will be here, he's going to be representing, I guess, the plaintiffs in a, some lawsuits here, he will be the medical expert. So we talked a little bit about Meramec, and he said, certainly feel free, anybody that has anything, he's available by email, and if anybody has any questions. The takeaway, the big takeaway was that people asked questions, and one of the big questions was, the EPA's, you know, current guidelines of 70 parts per trillion, is it safe? And they said, the EPA, when asked, is no longer saying that, you know, that the MCL is, chemical levels below that are safe. They said they used to say, you know, it's safe below 70, they are no longer using that terminology. So things are changing, and there's work to be done, but it's, you know, it's sort of in process. The other thing that I wanted to, I just sort of, I wrote some notes, because I missed the May 24th meeting, and I think Lauren sort of addressed it, but I had a different perspective, because I'm not only part of the Meramec Citizens for Clean Water, but also the Joint Advisory Group with Councilors Boyd and Albert. So I wrote some, just some of my notes that I didn't want to forget, and I was unable to attend that May 24th council meeting, but was grateful to have had the opportunity to review it online. As a community advocate for clean water, I took particular note of the PFOA update and any related discussion. I wanted to take a few minutes to address and offer an additional perspective relative to the comments made about how residents' concerns over some potential chemical contamination and health and safety issues noted at Watson Park were conveyed to the town. And I absolutely get the point about social media and everything else. Unfortunately, we live in a world where social media is a huge, you know, we can't control people, and I don't think that was the issue here, but I hear you. Despite being members of the same citizen-led advocacy group, my intentions not to speak on behalf of the individual that was referenced, as I wasn't asked to, nor was I directly involved. But as I am a member of that group, and a member of the Joint Advisory Group with the town councilors, I have direct knowledge of both groups, and so I feel like I should speak. I want to talk about how, my understanding of how information is shared, just from the group perspective, and insights sort of into the events of the past few months, which have impacted and limited more consistent intergroup and intra-group communication. My statements, my own, and offered to help foster shared and positive communication between citizens, citizens groups, and our town council. To that end, it's my hope that in the future, consideration will be given to whether or not concerns such as those voiced at that meeting might be better addressed at another venue. In addition to the feedback Bill and Pete shared on the 24th, I wanted to talk about the concerns that Councilor Harrington raised. And I, from what I could see, it seems that there may be a misunderstanding of a communication protocol that maybe you thought was in place, or had been agreed upon within the group. And from what I got, we don't share the same understanding. And I just want to clarify so that you know sort of the background. I don't believe that we've ever had an agreement where these councilors were the single conduit to communication with the town council. I don't think, they or we expected that everything we did had to go to them, because, I mean, I think that's unreasonable to burden them with that. Plus, there's so much going on, in the times that we meet, there just isn't enough time to talk about it all. Nor that they have any obligation to do the same to us, you know, that they have to share everything. There's not enough time, and it serves no purpose. They, we speak as private citizens, unless we say we're speaking for the group, and, you know, I don't, I don't think I've ever done that, I speak for myself. And just like they are members of the town council, when we met, they are very clear to say, we speak not for the town council, we speak as, you know, what we say, we're saying for ourselves, and it's the same with us. And I think it gets confusing for everybody, because, well, you know, because you're seen as a town council member, or we're seen as a member of, you know, the Citizens Group. But unless, and I think it's probably the same for them, unless we say we're speaking for the town council or the group, we're not. So I think that would help, you know, and just to recognition that, that there are, you know, that people don't give up their rights to speak to the town council as a public citizen. And let's see. I want to say, I'm very grateful to Councilors Albert and Boyd, they've made themselves available to meet with us and share PFAS concerns and information. And even though our time has been limited, over the last number of months, it's been productive and informative and positive. We're grateful for the interest of the two MVD commissioners, that they, you know, they're certainly wanting to join the Joint Advisory Group, and I think that's good for the whole, the good of the community. We're all committed to addressing the same water contamination issue. There's one more thing that I want to say. I think Lauren got a lot of them. And the other thing was that I reached out to everybody in the group, and we had that meeting scheduled on the 27th. And... The only other thing, I just wanted to give you a little information as to, over the, we had met very, pretty regularly early on, and then there was a lot of changes with MVD changes, and people leaving our group to join the MVD, schedule changes, work commitments came up, and the goal of the group, and what I think was well-intentioned, was to make sure that we didn't meet without anybody, so that everybody heard the same thing, there was complete transparency. And I think although it was a great goal, it's unrealistic, and we've seen that. And so now we said, when I sent out the email, I said, okay, as long as we have a representative of each group, then we know, then the meeting will happen, no matter if somebody gets sick, or gets called into work, or whatever. So that's pretty much all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Is there anybody who would like to?
Catherine Hodge, 44, Belmont, Meramec. Just have one question for Bill. My name is Catherine Hodge. Where did you come up with Kathy Comar at the last meeting?
And in information that we had when I met with you and Gail, and Kyle at the, at Watson Park, that's where I got your name from. So I don't know where it appeared first, so I had you incorrectly as well, I apologize.
Oh, okay, because I heard.
I know that's Kathy Comar, and I know you're Catherine Hodge. I was only.
That's Kathy Stack.
Kathy Stack, excuse me, excuse me. Kathy, I apologize. You only live down the street from me, you know.
Too many Cathies.
I apologize. So I don't, I don't know where it came from, but it was in an email.
In an email, okay. I have a question first. I was going to discuss two things, but if, it depends on what your answer is to my first one, whether or not I discuss it. Have any of the councilors gone ahead and read the 1,200-page report from Flatley to DES about the new property?
No.
And the soil samples and the water samples?
No. No.
Okay. There is a 1,200-page report, which I have read, from Flatley to DES. So if I could ask one of you, or all of you, at some point to read it, I guess, analyze the data like I did, and maybe we could put that on a future agenda, if possible?
Eileen.
I have, I've been following that.
Okay.
I certainly have not read the 1,200-page document, but it's been of concern to me as, because Clark from DES and I have been discussing this for some time. I'd say to him, you know, you understand that Flatley's putting in 205 buildings, 240 apartments, it's directly abiding St. Obane, and he'd say, yes, I know that. And then a couple of months later, he'd call me and he'd say, did you know that Flatley was putting it? And I'd say, yes, we already talked about that. Then he called me and said, it's on the planning board agenda. And I said, I know that it is, and now it's approved. And they have now, I've been informing him all along, they've, they've come and picked up their building permits, Clark, they, I mean, they've submitted their building permits. And he said, well, you're going to have to hold on to them because they haven't done their testing. And I said to him, we have no right to hold their building permits. You write me a letter and tell me to hold them, and I will hold them. And he said he wouldn't. So I said, we're going to give them. So then they send out this, you know, from what I understand, from Clark, in very simplistic terms, that the groundwater that they tested was, on the Flatley site, was in the neighborhood of 1,400 parts per trillion.
1,400 parts per trillion. They only did two water tests on the property, because that's what they were limited to by Flatley.
Right.
And both of those test results were at 1,400.
Right. And so I've been keeping the council abreast of all of those things on kind of a level like that, so they're all aware that there is an issue there with the groundwater.
And you know that there's issues with the soil as well?
The soil, no, he didn't talk about the soil.
Yes. There.
Yeah, there is.
The first.
Excuse me. This goes back to the conversation that I wanted, that we talked about regarding, regarding Kits Cove and Watson Park, whether or not we could look at doing remediation services based on the report that came out of the soil discoveries at the Flatley property.
Oh, did you read the report?
I've looked at it very, I've only looked at it at high level, I've not read it in depth.
Okay, and I'm not trying to be sarcastic.
No, I know, I understand that, I understand.
If you don't mind, indulge me just for a second.
I just, I looked at it.
I will, and I'd like to get it just to the public comment so we can get it wrapped up. We spent a bit of time tonight.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, because you've already started.
Because I spoke to Clark again about the soil, because as we know, soil PFAs are tested in parts per billion rather than parts per trillion.
Okay.
And so he said that there were no issues in the, because it's 500 parts per billion is what the EPA standards are, and the state has not, has not adopted any state standards because he believes that there are no, there are no agreed-upon tests. So I'm just telling you what he said to me, okay?
Okay. I did read all 1,200 pages and looked at all of the, I know, it was so fun.
Was it a cure for insomnia?
Yeah. No, it's not.
Okay.
There was so much data on there, like you said, the two water tests, they were limited to two, 1,400 points per trillion. Enough said about that. How they got away with that, I have no idea. The soil testing, there were issues with the soil, there were, there were patches that were above 500. I have like seven pages, and I can tell you what appendix it is, what page it is, what the readings are at.
Yeah, would you email that to me, please?
It's all scribbles.
Email me the scribbles.
Okay.
Or just make copies and drop them off.
Okay. One of the issues with the soil was, the first 24 inches were severely contaminated. And from 24 to 36, there was less contamination. They found from 48 down to 12 feet that everything seemed to be okay. So the agreement between Flatley and DES, and this is why I don't know what you've spoken with about Clark, the agreement between Flatley and DES was that Flatley could, under no circumstances, remove the first 24 inches of soil. They had to keep that soil on the property, use it on the property, and keep it away from the water. That was what they agreed upon. The other thing that was suggested in the, in the Flatley letter was OSHA issues. They classified it as being a D1, which the minimum requirement is, they have to wear breathing apparatuses. From day one, no breathing apparatuses have been worn by the contractors, by anybody who's been on that site. So if it's not important enough for the workers to wear them so that they stay away from the contamination, all of the dust and everything was kicked up. So everybody should just go over there and take a big, deep breath. It was also suggested that they use water trucks to keep the dust at a minimum, if not to completely get rid of it. None of that was used. Dust is flying up all over the place, it's going on to the other properties. When they start drilling their holes, you can go over there and watch them, and you can see the dust going up.
One more thing. I am completely with you, and I keep sending emails to Clark, they're digging now, they're, they're breaking ground now, there's big, huge heaps of soil now.
Those are the contaminated piles, by the way.
Right, I understand that, but I keep telling him, and he sends them on to Lee Ann. And just one more thing. The only document that I have ever seen, and I'm not saying that you, there isn't a 1,200 one, but the one that I saw was from the state, DES, to Flatley, which basically was a letter of recommendations that they, they were not mandated. They were, we recommend that you do this, we recommend that you do that.
And the one that I'm talking about, all the testing was done in November, it was just released the third week of May. That's the 1,200-page document.
From who to who?
From Flatley to DES with all of the soil samples, the water samples. They have graphs where they've picked up like eight or 10 other PFAS chemicals within the soil. So that's a concern now, like Nancy has suggested, this has got to be PFAS, no more PFOA, PFOS. They found eight to 10 other compounds within the soil that, you know, aren't regulated. And I've been keeping up with Leigh Anne Atwell for about the past 18 months. And I actually just wrote her a letter again today, and I apologize that I didn't CC yourself or I didn't CC anybody on the council because I was doing it just me. And I've developed a really keen relationship with her, and she gives me lots of information. And to date, there are no more testings to be done that we've been made aware of. So that is a concern. So, and Clark, it doesn't really seem like Clark is giving you all that much more information. It seems like I actually have more information than Clark is giving you.
Okay.
So that is kind of the scary part, and that's why, you know, sometimes when things are on Facebook, it's like, we understand that you guys are limited to what you can do and the time period that it takes you guys to do it. So that's why sometimes we, me, I'll admit it, I overstep because I can get the information a lot faster than you guys can.
Thank you, Catherine. Okay. And...
The only problem is, and the frustration that we have, is that the, we have no jurisdiction over that property.
Yeah.
The only one that can stop Flatley or put a stay on, on any of that is the state of New Hampshire. We have no role.
And they won't do it.
And that's because it's outside of our urban comp act.
Yeah, they, DES has...
I just wanted to be clear about that.
Yeah, DES has said that they basically, they can't do anything. The property was zoned, the property was, because it's got everything to do with what the levels are at. But you just pulled up two samples in November of all times at 1,400. There are soil samples that are over 500. So I'm not understanding, you know, how all this is still continuing in our town. So...
Thank you, Catherine.
Yeah.
We got it, Catherine.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. All right. I've, I've never been the parliamentarian, but I can see how we might have to start getting a little tighter on this. It's just, it's just went on for a bit, but, so next... Ben, like, still have... Oh, I apologize, please.
I just, I have a quick comment. Carol DePiero, 10 Cambridge Drive. In the effort for transparency, in a lot of the document digging that's been going on, we've seen things that are being sent to a health officer, and I'm not really sure who that is, but we don't see Eileen copied on a lot of the stuff, which concerns us. So that might be something to look into in the DES One Stop database. And then the other thing, just listening to that last conversation about Flatley is, you may not have official jurisdiction, but can we request the town to maybe reach out for concern for the, even the workers on this project, to Flatley? Again, you may not have official control where you can stop it, but can you be a voice? And that's what we're hoping to achieve together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Carol. I'm afraid to ask, but if there's anybody further who would like to address the council?
I've already spoken to the supervisor at OSHA for the district, and basically, they won't do anything. So...
Well, that's intriguing, because if OSHA won't, then I, I don't know how else it can be handled.
They can, it was recommended because it's a D1 level, that they do this, they do that, and if the workers choose not to do it, that's totally up to them. OSHA can't force them to do anything. That's what I was told by the...
Because it's a recommendation, not a requirement.
Correct.
It's highly suggested.
Yes.
Highly suggested that they follow those protocols.
Yeah. And they're, they're choosing not to, so that's it.
Thank you. Yes.
Very short, Kathy Stack, 7 Norwood Drive. I'm a little, hearing this last conversation piece about the piles of sand and the contaminated soil and the buildup, which is relatively high at this point, I'm a little concerned about the abutters. And I don't know what you can do or not do, because you don't have jurisdiction over it. But I think as a town, we need to come together and be somewhat concerned about the people who live in the town and are going to be affected by this contaminant in the air. That's great that we're not going to touch the two feet, and we're going to pile it into big, huge piles, but it's blowing all over the place. If there's anything you can do, I guess I would implore you to please do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there anybody further? All right. Next on the agenda is recognitions, resignations, and retirements. And this evening, we would, the council would like to recognize Susan Lee, Ken Asai, Joshua Shavoni, and David Jaugh, who is not here tonight, but if I could have you folks join me up here, appreciate it.
This evening, actually, at our last meeting, the Economic Citizens Advisory Committee came and had suggested that their work was relatively complete, and they were, they were desirous of us contemplating disbanding the committee, which we did do, even closer. And so just a couple of quick notes here, that the EDCAC, which Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee, was established on December 14th, 2006, and they held their first meeting on March 17th in '07. Councilor Boyd was their first chairman for two years, I believe. And, and then after that, Susan Lee took over and has continued to run with it, so it's disbanded two weeks ago. And she, yeah, she'd been the chair since September 22nd of 2009. So this evening, we have a couple of recognitions. Susan's here. We have, because she has been a charter member and with, with it from the beginning to the end, we wanted to offer her this plaque. And it's, it says, presented to Susan B. Lee, in recognition of the dedicated service you have given for more than 11 years as a member of the Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee of the Town of Merrimack, it is a pleasure to present you with this plaque. Your dedication and donation of countless hours has made Merrimack a better place to live and work. We wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance, March 2007 to June 2018, presented on behalf of the Town of Merrimack this 14th day of June 2018. And so we thank you so very, very much. And then to Ken and Joshua, we have, in recognition of your service as a member of the Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee, in recognition of your dedication and commitment to public service during your appointment as a member of the Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee, your service and devotion to the Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee has had a valuable effect upon this community. We wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance of duty, August 2015 to June 2018, on both of them. And so, and thank you so very much. You guys did an awesome job. I was always impressed without all my, I want to give that to you. I don't know. I'm not sure, Bill, if you have anything to say.
I have, I'd be happy to. That's okay.
I know Nancy's looking this like a time limit, I think. But Ken and Joshua, I just want to say thank you very much for the service that you've given to the EDCAC, and I wish you nothing but health and happiness with your future endeavors. We do have vacancies on the, on other committees, so I hope that, once you take a step back, take pause and pause a little bit, and take a breath, then maybe we'll be approving your names for other vacancies on the, on, on the committees in town. So I hope you will consider that. So thank you again for the service that you've provided to the Town of Merrimack. Susan, you and I started together. It is very bittersweet to see this committee come to an end, but while, as family a little too, you know, I started the first two years of developing the meetings with everybody else in the committee, you were the heart and soul of running those meetings for the remaining nine. And the nights that you gave to put on a great meeting to show progress with what we're, what the committee was doing, a lot of the behind-the-scenes work with some of the other people, Doug Dowell comes to mind, you know, there was some, you know, Dan Dwyer, who was part of the inaugural committee, Lee Mayhew. I mean, we had some great people that were on the committee that served throughout the years, but your loyalty and your dedication to making Merrimack a great place to work and live as a part of the Economic Development Committee is certainly not lost in my, so I want to thank you for all the years of work that you've put into the committee, and I wish you nothing but health and happiness, and I hope that you volunteer for something once you've had the opportunity to take a breath and figure out what the next step is for Susan Lee. So thank you so much. Appreciate it. Really mean it.
I have one comment. I wasn't going to speak tonight. This is, the Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee is an object lesson into thinking carefully about how you name a committee. That is the only stumbling block, is it's very difficult to say, and it doesn't have a good acronym.
No.
Because it's either EDCAC or ED SAC, and either of those is not very pleasant. So just keep that in mind for the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, under appointments, the councils will be presented with the details of the New Hampshire opioid litigation, and I don't know, Bill, if you would like to introduce Tom Collintuno.
I'd be very happy to. Mr. Chairman, and through you, to my fellow colleagues, it's with great pleasure that I introduce the Honorable Tom Collintuno to the chair to talk to us tonight about exploring opioid litigation against some of the, the big farmers that have been responsible for the, for the problem that is currently plaguing not just our community of Merrimack, but also in the Granite State and in other communities throughout the United States. In the interest of full disclosure, Tom and I go way back. We've been friends for about 15 years. Perdition is at St. Marie's Church up in Manchester. We've gotten to know each other through the years, couple of Red Sox games, couple of B.C. football games. And Tom has been a very dear friend to me throughout the years. Tom approached me, asking me whether or not he could present to the council regarding the thing that he's, the thing, the litigation that he's working on. I said it's absolutely appropriate for him to come and present. Tom is affiliated with Bianco Professional Association out of Concord, but I think the best testament that I like about Tom is that he previously served the state of New Hampshire as the United States Attorney under President George W. Bush from 2001 to 2009. So I know, I trust everybody's got the materials, they had the opportunity to at least review it, make questions. I know Tom is equally as prepared. So, Tom, I want to welcome you to the Town of Merrimack, and we look forward to hearing your presentation.
Well, thank you very much, councilors, and I thank Councilor Boyd for inviting me here tonight. He's given the basic background. We all know what's going on with the opioid epidemic that is really creating havoc in this country. And so the, the basic background is that several years ago, states started suing the manufacturers and the distributors of the opioid medications that are causing so much addiction, pain, overdose, deaths, and so forth, and costs to governmental agencies. And the state of New Hampshire is one of them that has, has a suit filed against, I'll call it Big Pharma for short. And so communities started saying, well, if states are able to recover money, and it's going to go into the state coffers, the state budgets, how is that going to help us? Because we're on the front lines of responding to this and having to put out fire, EMS, police, social welfare, education, the school districts who are being affected by this problem, what's in it for us? So the local community started getting involved. And our law firm is involved with a consortium of national law firms, very high-powered national mastort law firms, together with a couple of firms in Massachusetts who reached out to us to become the New Hampshire adjunct to this, to serve as local counsel here in New Hampshire. And we, we were the first consortium that started representing local communities, cities, towns, and counties, and even some Indian tribes out in the West, to bring such cases. And right now, our consortium represents over 460 communities. And here in New Hampshire, when we got involved, we have reached out to medium-sized cities, smaller cities and larger towns like Merrimack. And right now, we have signed up Dairy, London Dairy, as towns, and the cities of Franklin and Laconia as clients of ours in our consortium. There are several other consortiums out there, and I know that Berlin and Keene, Dover are also getting involved with other consortiums. I have an appointment with, I've been talking to Hudson, and I have an appointment with them to talk further on July 9th. So what's involved here is that if a community gets involved as a client and joins our consortium in bringing a lawsuit, this is, as you saw, I believe I sent down this, I believe you all, okay. So this explains it all, so I won't belabor it. But as it says in there, all these cases are originally filed into the federal court in your jurisdiction, which ours is in Concord, and then they get transferred to the mass, multi-district litigation program for this type of case, which is in Cleveland, Ohio. Judge, there's a judge out there who's managing all these cases. As I said, there's, there's hundreds and hundreds of them now out there. And the cases that we filed within the past several months for our clients have already been transferred out there. So what happens in a multi-district litigation situation is that the, the judge, unless there can be a settlement, which there isn't yet, the judge is really pushing hard against these defendants for settlement. But if there's no settlement, the judge will schedule what we call bellwether trials, and there are three scheduled for next March, March of 2019, to actually go to trial, again, if there's no settlement. And based upon the results of those trials, and there'll be some others after that, the, the defendants, presuming the plaintiffs win and get a, get a judgment from a jury, a large judgment, the defendants will then come to the table and set aside a fund, a settlement fund, like they did in the tobacco litigation or the California lead paint litigation. And our, our firms that we're connected with, that were, were involved in both of those types of things, they'll put together, and they expect that there will be a multi-multi-billion-dollar fund put together eventually, that then the plaintiffs can share in. So if the Town of Merrimack ceases to join with us, with our clients, once that settlement matrix is made, you will be given an offer to either accept or to reject, and you can go to trial on your own here, if the case will be brought back to Concord, federal court, but we expect that most clients would accept the offer, to get money back to compensate you for the losses that have been suffered here in this town because of the opioid epidemic. And the beauty is that once the money gets returned, you can spend it on what you need, what you need to. And the damages are not only going to be to compensate you for the past losses that you've had to expend, police, fire, and the things I mentioned, but also to try to put together a remediation fund going forward in the future, to stop the problem in the future, solve the problem in the future in various ways that are described in here. So with that brief introduction, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Now, the beauty, and I should have started with this, the beauty is that the town will not have to spend any funds whatsoever. No taxpayer dollars go into this. If you sign up as a client, this is done on a contingent fee basis, like you're all familiar with, but unlike most contingent fee bases that attorneys take, regular accident cases and things like that, on a one-third basis, our fees are calculated on a one-quarter, so 25% basis. And the costs, we, we front all the costs, and if there's no recovery, you don't have to repay them. So costs, right now, our, the, our attorneys in our consortium are telling me, they're estimating that the cost might run somewhere between 3% and 5%. So 25% fees and other 3% and 5% costs on top, the rest comes to the town. Now, the more communities we get, you know, the cost will be shared by more communities, and so that percentage will go down. So that's the basic program. If you, if you decide that you want to join, we would send you a, a fee agreement. I'd send it to the town manager. You could all look it over, make sure it's to your liking. If, once it's signed, then I would send that down to our, our partners. They would prepare a lawsuit, they'd send that up. a lawsuit, they'd send that up, again, I'd send that over to, to you, to make sure it's, meets your liking, and once we get the go-ahead, then we would file it in the federal court, and then it would get shifted off to Ohio, and you'd join the pool, you'd join the, all the plaintiffs. So, does anyone have questions?
Barbara first, and then I'll get you, Peter.
Okay. I'm curious now, and maybe I'm putting the cart before the horse, but in the hierarchy of things, I can imagine that there'll be not only several communities that you've already mentioned, but more communities, as well as cities, and I got to think that counties are invested in this pretty well, too, with task force, and, and taking care of prisoners, and, and so forth, and, and all the drug treatments and anything involved are going to be involved in that. Is there a hierarchy of how, should a lawsuit come down and there, there was an award, how that would, how that would play out to a community the size of Merrimack versus a community the size of Manchester, or a county itself?
That, those kind of details remain to be seen on how that would work out, depending on, on the judge, and the, the plaintiffs, lead counsel, and we have a committee that are, are helping to advise, and then the defendants, and that's all going to be subject to negotiation, as I said, once these bellwether trials are held, and there's a decision made to put together a settlement offer, those are, those are going to be worked out, and whether it's based on population, or whether it's based on the costs that you actually have, it's probably going to be a combination, that makes sense, and that's what we would push for, is to have a combination of all the factors, to make it fair to everybody. Here in New Hampshire, I think there is one county, I think Belknap County is, has signed up, I believe I heard that, I may be wrong, out in other part, other states where the county government is, is the big, you know, the more important government, rather than cities and towns, there are a lot of counties represented there, but here in New Hampshire, I think it's really the communities that have the bigger costs. But you're right, the counties have their county jails, and I know Hillsborough has the drug task force, Hillsborough County has drug task force, but we haven't talked to Hillsborough County yet, but, but we could, but we think it would be more important and more fruitful for the towns to get involved as the towns. So, I don't know if that's a sufficient answer to your question, but I think it's, the answer is, it remains to be seen exactly how that's all going to be worked out in terms of the hierarchy. I mean, it's, it's reasonable to assume that if Merrimack got involved as a plaintiff, once that settlement matrix was made, the settlement offer that would be made to Merrimack wouldn't be as high as it would be to make Manchester and Nashua, but, you know, you're one-fifth maybe the size, and so, we assume that it might be one-fifth of the offer, or something, something like that, yeah.
Thank you.
So, in other, just to clarify that one a little bit more, so in other words, what you might envision is that all of the communities, states, cities, towns, would go into one pool?
Yes.
Since we're all litigating the same problem?
Yes.
Whatever that is, and that pool would actually get shared out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's the way this multi-district litigation works.
Okay. And, you know, I read the packet pretty thoroughly, and what is the actual premise of the suit? Because you name several different activities that are in question, but fentanyl has been around since, you know, all of these three drugs have been around quite a long time, since the 40s and the 50s. So, although advertising seems to be part of that, you know, were they in fact, in, you know, were they complying with the regulations at the time that the drugs were taken out? Because the FDA approved these drugs, you know, for distribution within the United States. So, I'm not really understanding the premise of the lawsuit at its root.
Sure. As I understand it, the problem developed in the 90s when they developed the, the opioid pain medications, and they were sold to physicians on the premise that they're not addictive. So, that's problem number one. Then, the federal government created laws which required them to monitor the sales and distribution, and report back if they've noticed anomalies where there is too much prescription going on, unreasonable amounts, and they, they didn't follow that, they violated that.
How did they violate that? I'm sorry.
Just by not, not reporting. So, there have been settlements with the DEA on some of the major companies, with hundreds of millions of dollars of fines already, like one company, I forget which one, was settled for $650 million. So, that's already going on, but they're only beginning now to, to really mend their ways, and the medical community is finally stepping up and starting to realize that they shouldn't be prescribing these as much as they have been, and it's getting, you know, it's getting harder to get the medication. So, but, so that, that's the premise, the premise of the lawsuit is that these companies knowingly pushed dangerous addictive drugs onto the population for profit without following the law.
Now, what your lawsuit says doesn't take into account physician prescribing habits, and as we know, you know, you can't get these drugs legally without a prescription. So, you know, it's kind of like going back to the deep pockets and saying, we're going to blame you because the doctors were over prescribing these drugs. Now, another thought about this was, again, with the doctors, they, I lost that thought, I'm sorry. Trying to look at my notes at the same time.
Sure.
I think I'm done. In your talk, you, you did answer all my questions.
Well, you mentioned doctors, and I want to make the point that our consortium is not suing any local doctors, hospitals.
No, I saw that in your packet.
Other consortiums had, and, and that was a, a turnoff to some of the people, some of the people we've talked to, no, we're not suing any local people. As a matter of fact, this, our packet also lists the, the pharmacy that sell these, and we're not suing the pharmacies here.
Right.
So, you know, your local Walgreens and CVS, no, they're not defendants.
Right.
It's just the major distributors and manufacturers.
And the FDA also regulates how much of these drugs these companies can produce, and if you go into the FDA reg, rules, and their, their actual monitoring, these companies that you're actually suing have not increased production over the last 10 years.
Right.
So, if they're not increasing production, I can maybe see why they didn't say, they didn't think that there was an overabundance, because they have so many pounds or millions of pills going to CVS, and to Walgreens, and everywhere else across the country, I'm not even sure how they would notice that they're, all of a sudden, they're seeing an increase in, in output.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's, they're responsible for reporting through the DEA, ARCOS program, and we just had a major development where the, the judge has approved our request for discovery of the ARCOS facts and figures, so that, that's really going to help, we're going to be able to see exactly where things have been sent. But there are some states where, in one year, there are more prescriptions of the pills than there are people in the state. I mean, it's, it's really outrageous.
I wouldn't doubt it.
Nancy, you all set, Barbara?
Yeah, I'm good, go.
You can tell we're nurses. I read the whole thing as well, too. And I had a lot of the concerns you had, and the reality is, a lot of the current problems is the international mail of opiates, fentanyl, and all the rest, too, it's not just only. And just to be able to address what you were talking about, it does talk about the epidemic, and the major problem is failure to report suspicious orders to the DEA and prevent diversion of these dangerous drugs. So, it's not a matter of manufacturing, but the distribution, and they're supposed to be monitoring if there's an increased amount, and they're not doing the reporting. So, to me, and is that with the one that, one of the places just got fined?
Yes.
Because that's really where they should get them.
Right.
Because that's, that's against the law, they broke the law, period.
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Okay, this is a basic fundamental question. You're telling us about the pros, what are the cons? What cons exist, why we should not consider? Because there got to be some, we just...
I can't think of anything, it doesn't cost the town anything, it's money that's going to be coming back to you eventually, it's, I mean, there's no guarantees in life, but our consortium fully expects there to be large settlements for communities even of this size. As I said, there's no cost, but the, the one thing the town would have to do, if you do sign up, the first thing you're going to get is a, is an email asking you to put what's known as a litigation hold, which you probably all know, I'm sure you, you've heard about that, which just simply means, don't destroy your records, that's common sense, okay? And the next thing you'll do is, is get a request to start collecting the data from your various departments. So, there may be some employee time to assist us, but we'll assist you, too.
Please don't ask those kind of things.
Investigators slash paralegal type of assistance to tell you what we need, and even maybe dig it, with your permission, dig into your database to, to pull out the facts that we need to do, to prove your case.
Do you know, one of the things that always bothered me about past litigations for exact, the tobacco, when that was resolved, and money was distributed, they used it for sidewalks, they used it for anything they wanted, and instead of targeting it and having to prove that that money was being utilized for the purpose for which it was, is there any designation on this that you're aware of?
Well, as, as I said, you can use it for anything you want, you're the elected officials who are responsible for the town, I mean, presumably, you would want to use it to put the money back into the police, fire, EMS budgets, but what you get beyond that is, is you can, you can do whatever you need, maybe clean up some, clean up some PFOA sites.
Yeah. And like when the tobacco, the states got the money, the towns didn't get the money.
Right.
So, here we are, we're going to be able to just, you know, provide justification as being litigants for this, and what prevents it, okay, New Hampshire's going to get this, and Merrimack might get diddly squat.
Well, we're on a different track, and...
And I know you can't answer that.
Yes.
Because it's a judgment, whatever the judgment, judge says, right?
No, it's, it's, it's whatever's going to be offered.
Okay, that's...
Yeah, but in the settlement, in the settlement pool.
But I think those are the kind of, it's not an argument against it, but I think there has to be a reasonable and a realistic perspective.
Sure.
When we talk about this, because we aren't necessarily going to get money for the PFOA. If it gets it, the state will probably get the money, and who knows? But, those just make some questions.
Well, the state, just to clarify, the state will not get money that gets offered to the town if you're a plaintiff, if you decide to become a plaintiff, you will, yeah, yeah, they can't come in and grab it.
The state has, actually...
And they have their own lawsuit, they have their own separate lawsuit going on, yeah, yeah.
Uh, Peter?
And Nancy and Barbara, just a, a real great example of the reason for this lawsuit is 60 Minutes did an investigation on McKesson Corporation, who's named here, and it's very enlightening to see what happened in that, in that investigation, and how the pills got distributed. And I, I was so frustrated, they sent millions and millions of pills to a small pharmacy in Colorado, that, there's a town of about 5,000 people, it was enough to feed the city of New York. And so, there was red flags, and you never got it taken care of, so that's just one example, you know? And every day, you see it, your kids go to the dentist, and they get their wisdom teeth taken out, and the doctor writes them a prescription for 30 oxy, then you can refill it, come, give me a break, they're all under pressure, the dentists and doctors, there's a big issue with this. I highly support it, I see it every day, the results of what's going on with all this, so I, I support this.
The 60 Minutes piece that you mentioned, I didn't personally see, but I heard about it, and the two retired DEA agents who, who were featured on that show are our hired experts who are under contract to work only for us, so that's one of the main advantages of being with our, with our consortium. But you're right, they, they had, they set up these pill mills all over the Ohio River Valley, and it was featured in a book called Dreamland, if anybody ever seen it, I read it, I just couldn't believe it, my chiropractor actually lent it to me, because he's getting involved in trying to promote alternative pain treatments to, to keep people off these pills. But I, this is a fantastic book, written by someone from California, who talked mostly about the, the Mexican trade up into the West, and then also into the Midwest, but he isn't familiar with New Hampshire, and didn't realize that we're, we were ground zero for this problem, at least in the Northeast, and so he didn't talk about New Hampshire at all, but it's, it's amazing when you read about what this did, and how these pill mills got set up, these doctors just started writing scripts, and people would line up out the door, they would, they would come in for two minutes and say, I got a pain, okay, here's your script, and off you go to the pharmacy, and it just devastated whole towns, it was focused on Portsmouth, Ohio, and if you read the book, you're going to really be amazed at what's happened with this problem, yeah.
You let the doctors off too easily, though, in my opinion. That doesn't have to do for tonight, but I believe you let the doctors off the hook too easily, because I think they own a lot of this problem, but...
They, they can't get them legally until the doctor writes the script.
And now, these other components are a big part of it, one place getting millions of pills, I suppose, but, but doctors, for a long time now, have been giving this stuff out like it's candy. Does somebody have some of it? Not Tom?
Um, you started to talk a little bit about it, but I guess the, one of the questions I have is, can you tell me the difference between the various consortiums you've referred to, why we would join this consortium with Dairy and London Dairy, Franklin and Laconia, versus joining what Manchester and Nashua went with, and things of that nature? What, what, what are the, what are the variables there that we should be considering?
I, I don't really know what they offer, I haven't, I'm not privy to that information. All I know is, the benefits of, of this consortium is, we were the first, we're the biggest, we have the most attorneys on the, the plaintiffs, it's, it's in here, plaintiff lead counsel, and the, the group that manages the litigation, we have five out of the 22 seats in the Ohio litigation, and our litigation team involves some of the most famous and well-known plaintiff tort firms, so you'll be well-represented. I think it's, it says in here that there are over 200 attorneys working on this, and you have your local, we would be your local connection, too, that we'd be available at any time to answer any questions you have, and, you know, ameliorate any concerns you might have, so that's the best answer I can give you. I, I don't know, I, I know that there was one firm out of New York that's representing some people, so it's not local, and that's the best I can tell you.
I guess I'm confused by this whole MDL, or whatever it is, program, and, and to come up with multiple consortiums of attorneys that are representing multiple groups of people, all being consolidated into one mass legal program, and then come up with presumably one solution that gets distributed out across all these, and how that gets split up and stuff, just seems very confusing.
Well, it's just, it's the mechanism that the federal courts have established to handle these type of mass tort litigation cases, so that you have consistency, and you don't have different results all over the country, and different judges trying to try these cases. It's, they decided a long time ago to set up this program to handle these type of cases, and so this is how all, all the big mass tort cases have, have been handled, so that's, that's the way this is going to be handled.
If you could talk to us a little bit more about this, this council that you were referring to, with 22 seats on it, or something like that, how it's formed, and...
Right.
And what its position is.
Yeah, let me...
Just for the public's benefit as well as mine, since I got lost trying to read through it, but...
Sure, sure. Okay, if you look on page five of the handout, it says that...
I bet they can't show that on TV, so...
Okay, yeah, well, I'll, I'll read it.
Thanks.
It says, "This experience, combined with our extensive client list, our opioid litigation experience, and our stature within the MDL, multi-district litigation community, has led us," meaning our consortium, "receiving five of the 22 leadership roles on the opioid multi-district litigation, including co-lead counsel Paul Farrell from the firm of Green and Ketchum, co-liaison counsel Troy Rafferty from Levin Peppantino Firm, and three plaintiffs' executive commission, committee positions, Peter Muji from Levin Peppantino, Roland Tellis from Barron &amp; Budd, Mike Fuller from the McQ Fuller. So, this is an incredible benefit to our clients, ensuring that their community's cries for help will be, will be heard." So, that's where the five out of 22 comes from.
I get the five out of 22, I'm trying to get a better understanding of what that whole group of people is, and how it's formed, and who controls that, and...
There, okay, so the, the judge authorizes it to be set up, so there's a plaintiff's couns, councils, a team, an executive committee, and there's a defendants, representing all the defendants, and they're the ones who negotiate everything, they're the ones who came up with this plan to have the, or proposed it, and the judge approved it, to have the bellwether trials happen, starting in next March, and whenever there's issues that come up about discovery, about scheduling... And whenever there's issues that come up about discovery, about scheduling and so forth, they're the ones who will go in and argue, you know, they'll, they'll appoint someone to go argue, so lead, lead counsel to argue the particular position or motion and so forth. You know, I don't have, I want to make it clear that our firm is not expertise, doesn't have expertise in multi-district litigation, what we are, are the local counsel for you. But these big firms that do this every day, they, they have tremendous expertise and they're well-regarded around the nation.
Okay. So I, so the judge got together with some of the original people that were involved and created this 22-member committee?
Well, I think the way it works is that the, the various firms that are representing plaintiffs got together and, you know, I don't know if they elect them or appoint them, how that works, I'm not exactly sure how that works. And the defendants do the same thing and then present that to the court and that's who the court works with, so.
Is that a fixed committee or is that fluid?
It, well, it will be for, for this litigation, to best my knowledge, unless, you know, someone retires or resigns and they, they'll get replaced by someone from the, one of these same firms, yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
And, uh, Bill?
Yeah, just to, to give some context, when I, when Attorney Colin Tuna reached out to me and I sent the information along to Finley, he included the packet that you received tonight, which included the, the handout and the stuff for N-H-O-L-A. The news articles I provided as anecdotal evidence to show that this isn't just one consortium representing, that there were other, that there were other communities and other consortiums. So to go back to Counsel Kenick's point, I want to apologize to you for any confusion that I may have caused with the packet, because the intent was to show you that, you know, Tom, you know, the, the communities that Tom is representing, he's not the only one, as he, as he just alluded to, that there are other communities that have their, represented by their own MDLs that are, that are pursuing, you know, their own, their own path in dealing with, with Big Farmer. The thing that attracted me about the conversation that I had with Tom was our recent budget cycle that we just went through, when Chief Roy came to us and asked for eighty-some-odd thousand dollars for overtime and asked for another half a million to put, to put a sergeant and a, and a cop in our SIU unit. And what we've seen over the last five months is we're seeing some real impact by these dollars that, that we've expended attacking the problem at these extended, at these extended state facilities. So I looked at, I looked at this as an opportunity to try and potentially recoup, I'm not going to say everything, but as an opportunity where there was low risk to the, low risk to the, to the community, to the town of Merrimack to participate, the potential for a high reward at the end of the day being possible to help us manage some of the monies that, you know, we, we had to make the case to the, to the voters in this community that we needed to have these cops to attack this particular problem and that, you know, we were acting on this problem at the, upon the advice of our chief of police. So echoing Counsel Albert, I, I do agree with this. I think we should be pursuing this, if anything, to be a part of the process so that if there is an end result and if there is an opportunity to receive compensation, we're in a position to, as, as Attorney Colin Tuna alluded to, be in a position to reallocate those funds directly back into our first responder budgets and to our police budgets. You know, my sole thought was what we went through this budget cycle and looking at it as an opportunity to mitigate some of the costs that we, we've asked the voters in this community to, to pay for so that we can attack that problem. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Bill. Does anybody have any further questions or come, Barbara?
Another question for you. Uh, I understand that you're going to try your first three cases in the next month or so.
No, March of 19.
19, okay. So what are you thinking is going to be the length of time for the litigation? Now, I understand the difference between a mass tort and a class action suit. And a class action suit can take 10, 15, 20 years before anyone sees any money or any settlement is made. So are you expecting to have the same, those same kind of timeframes for the mass tort? Because I don't know about anybody else here, but in 20 years, I'm not going to be here anymore.
Uh, the answer is no. The judge is really pushing both sides to put this on a faster track and has really been pushing for settlement right from the very beginning. I, I think, from what I've heard, and I get my information from our contacts down at the Boston firms, is that he's hoping to wrap this up in several years. So that's the best I can tell you.
Yeah, and you all have enough evidence to force the companies into some kind of settlement position?
That's the position that, that I've been told, that we, that we have, we're ready, we will be ready for trial on those initial cases. The initial, those are out of Ohio, by the way, so they're local to, to the court. And, and our team, from what I've heard, is, is very hopeful that once these first few cases are done, there will be a settlement offer, but as I said at the beginning, there's no guarantees in this game.
That's it? All right. Tom, thank you very, very much for stopping by this evening.
Thank you, my pleasure. Thank you very much for your time.
Tom, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Still going to Leonard Darien? Still live in Leonard Darien?
I live in Manchester.
Oh, you do? Oh, okay.
Yeah, near the road.
Good. It's a shorter ride.
Yes, it is.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right, no, no public hearings this evening. I see no legislators in the audience. Town manager report.
Do you want legislators up here on two audibles? I can briefly let you know.
For state legislators.
Yeah, no, because I can't. I appreciate it, Lauren.
State legislators.
Somebody, this is, somebody should be doing that one.
Yep. It, the best time is, well, actually, I've been, because you can't be heard, I can't really entertain the comment, but it's better to have those comments at the beginning during the public comment period. Thanks, so. Eileen?
Okay. Construction has commenced on the first phase of the Flatley Mixed Jews Project on DW Highway. The initial phase calls for, calls for four 48-unit multifamily buildings. The redevelopment of the former Shaw's Plaza continues to progress. The applicant recently received approval to modify the two sizes of the proposed pad site restaurants, one of which may become bank. The developer hopes to open for some of the tenants in the coming months. It's nice to see that sign up there too. Did you see that? Three six, something of a, 360?
Yeah. It's pretty exciting.
Merrimack 360. The planning board will continue discussions on the Route 3 corridor pedestrian bicycle plan July 17th with staff from the National Regional Planning Commission. The board will review results of the election day surveys and begin preparing, preparing a draft plan in hopes of completing the project by the end of the year. The engineering interns for the Public Works Department will be out in neighborhoods around the town performing pavement condition inspections. So if anybody sees some kind of strange-looking markings on the pavements, they're not crop circles or anything. They're from our interns. So the, in partnership with Eversource, the solid waste division of the Public Works Department, offered a free, free-on appliance disposal event last Saturday. On a normal Saturday, approximately 10 to 20 units are brought in for recycling during Saturdays and during Saturday's event, 142 units were recycled at no cost to the depositor, saving the Merrimack residents $2,100. Details of the event can be found on the Public Works Facebook page. Thank you.
Thanks, Eileen. Question for Eileen? Uh, Bill?
Eileen, what are, what are the ordinances in the town of Merrimack as it relates to picketing?
I don't know.
What was the question?
Do you know, Mike?
Picketing. In other words, if somebody wants to picket somewhere in town, do they need to go to the chief of police or to the police department to sign up and get a permit to picket?
I don't think so.
No, not at all. I think there's a couple of situations. One is...
You do not have to go to, um, see the chief at all. I think some of the restrictions are, you got to stay, you know, keep the public ways free and stay off the private property of that, of that establishment, establishment may be impicketed.
Okay, so anybody in town can assemble and exercise their First Amendment rights as long as they're abiding by traffic laws in the community and are in a location that's not deemed to be on private property?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Captain, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Would that also incorporate preventing access to a site?
That's correct, also.
Yes.
That you have to allow, you have to allow access.
You have to allow access.
Yes, thank you.
There's no consent agenda this evening under old business. We have the council is, I'm looking to offer up a proclamation designating June 21st, 2018 as the longest day, promote the efforts of raising funds and awareness for the care and support of those facing Alzheimer's disease. And what I'm offering up for the council, the proclamation, the town of Merrimack Town Council proclamation, National Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, June 2018, the longest day, June 21st, 2018. This, of course, you'll recall, was brought to our attention by Bob Bergen at our last meeting. The proclamation goes, "Whereas Alzheimer's disease, a progressive neurodegenerative brain disorder that tragically robs individuals of their memories and leads to progressive mental and physical impairments, and whereas there are no known treatments to prevent, cure, or even delay the onset or slow the progression of Alzheimer's disease, and whereas every 65 seconds, someone in the United States develops Alzheimer's disease, with the disease being the sixth leading cause of death in the United States, and whereas between 2000 and 2015, deaths from heart disease have decreased 11%, while deaths from Alzheimer's disease have increased 123%. And whereas 5.7 million Americans are living with Alzheimer's and by 2050, this number is projected to rise to nearly 14 million, and whereas with early detection and diagnosis, individuals and their families can gain access to medications and management strategies that may temporarily improve symptoms, and whereas there is a need to raise awareness about Alzheimer's disease and to honor all the caregivers who support and care for leavenings with the disease, now therefore be it resolved that we, the Town Council of the Town of Merrimack, hereby proclaims June as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month and June 21st, 2018, as the longest day in Merrimack, dated this 14th day of the June, 2018." So moved. Motion by Counsel Boyd.
Second.
Second by Tom Kenick. I know further discussion, I'll call the question.
I want to, I do want to thank Finley and Tom just for, for doing this. I think, I think you guys had to be commended for, for developing the proclamation and offering it tonight, so thank you.
Yeah, I, and they did, but it was, it was nice that Bob Bergen brought it to our attention and I was, I was happy to move with it.
I think we're all moved by it, so...
Yep. Very good, so no further discussion, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. 700, thank you very much. Under new business, first item is donation to the Parks and Recreation Department, a camp scholarship fund. The council is to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of $210 from the Merrimack Lions Club to the Parks and Recreation Department for the camp scholarship fund pursuant to RSA 31:95B and Charter Article 8, Section 15. Is Matthew?
Basically, the Lions Club came forward and want to give some money for a resident who couldn't afford camp, chance to go to camp.
More approval?
Second.
With thanks. A letter of thanks to be sent to the Lions Club, please? If possible. Any further discussion, I'll call the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. 700. Item number two under new business, donation to the Parks and Recreation Department, a camp scholarship fund. The council is to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of $1,050 from OVP Management Incorporated, which is the plaza we just discussed, three, the Merrimack 360 Shopping Plaza, to the Parks and Recreation Department for this camp scholarship fund pursuant to RSA 31:95B and Charter Article 8, Section 15. Seconded? Motion by Nancy, seconded by Counsel Boyd.
Mr. Chairman, is it, I want to thank OVP, they're responsible for building that beautiful thing.
Yeah, we should be paying them, I think.
Well, we, we kind of should, but I, I want to give, I mean, they're not even, they're not even...
They're overboard now.
I know, I know. They're not even up, they're not even operational, they're still doing the bricks and mortars of, of their project and making a donation so that five children in our community can go to camp. I think it's a testament to the, the corporate partnership that we alluded to a couple of weeks ago with, with DCU. So I'm really happy that they have made this contribution. I hope we can send a letter of our sincere thanks and gratitude, more with a welcome to the town of Merrimack.
Very good. So with the motion on the table, no further discussion, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. 700. Item number three under new business, donation acceptance for the Merrimack Police Department. The council is to consider the acceptance and expenditure of an anonymous donation in the amount of $500 pursuant to article, pursuant to RSA 31:95B and Charter Article 8, Section 15. Hi, Mike.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, thank you. Back in May, we had our annual open house and during the open house, traditionally for the past few years, we've been receiving two donations. And one was from, is from Crime Line. Actually, I'll go with the first one. It's actually a longstanding couple that's been in Merrimack for a long time. They come to the open house, enjoy it, but for some reason they come up and they hand a check over $500 and say, "Thank you very much for your service. Please don't tell us, anybody where it's coming from, but please accept it and put it to good use."
Beautiful. That's perfect. That's really wonderful.
But I will tell the, the board at this point, we haven't come up with the, what that purpose is going to be for the $500. More than likely for the national night out in August.
Okay. Very good. All righty. More approval, Mr. Chairman? Motion by Counsel Boyd, seconded by Tom Forden.
With a, with a letter of sincere thanks to the anonymous donors.
Yes.
Please.
Hold on.
Through the chief.
Through the chief.
Noted. No further discussion, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. All right, next item under new business, item number four. The council will consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation from Merrimack Crime Line in the amount of $1,436.75 to Merrimack Police Department pursuant to RSA 31:95B and Charter Article 8-15.
Correct. As you know, Merrimack Crime Line is a great partner for the Merrimack Police Department and the community. And actually, I believe this is their second donation this year that they've given to the Merrimack Police Department. This year is an amount of $1,436.75 was raised at the magic show that was held, I believe, a few weeks earlier. So on, at the open house, basically that was presented by the Crime Line to the chief of police in that amount. And that funds go back to what we call the Dallas account, which used to be the Gunny account. We'll call it the K-9 account.
K-9 account.
The Dallas K-9 account, which helps out for the expenses from everything from boarding the dog, if, you know, when, when the officer's gone, to equipment, to training, to vet bills, and that's where that money goes.
What was the one that was offered up?
Fluffing.
The fluffing, yeah. Eileen, what was that, that the?
Fluffing, uh, blowouts, fluffing blowouts.
Yeah. Washing blowout. So that doesn't happen anymore?
No.
Peter?
Captain, please express our thanks. You know, for years I worked with Crime Line as well as you and these folks are great. They, they're so supportive of the police department in any type of situation and especially with funding some of these special projects like the K-9 line. So, you know, great group of people, so civic-minded, you know, my hats off, then I might think so much of them. Thank you.
As I mentioned, the second donation this year, and I believe the total amount of money in the past few years, including these donations, over $16,000.
Yeah, I knew it was quite a bit. That's spectacular.
Has Dallas had his spa treatment yet?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
All right, I don't think we have, Nancy?
Just had, I won't make a motion or I'll follow up with a motion, but this is one of the circumstances we should have one of those special plaques made for, for the Crime Line for their continued...
My, the only problem with that, Nancy, is who would you give it to and do they The only problem with that, Nancy, is who would you give it to and do they have an, I don't believe they have an office, they meet at the PD, so I don't think they have a location. God bless them, give them, yeah, give them it, and I'm supportive of them, but I don't know.
They meet down in the conference room.
One thing, you know, I'd like to mention, you know, at the open house, you know, Tom was there, actually, Crime Line came up and we worked together, and they came up with a beautiful plaque of every member that's been there for, since their existence, if you remember.
Where do they keep that plaque?
And they just put it up and it's in the, right in the hallway, right next to.
So maybe our plaque could go with it.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, it's one of those organizations that certainly deserve one of those special plaques.
Absolutely. Maybe invite them here to give it to them for us.
Perfect, even better. But if they're doing a plaque with members, that plaque can accompany it.
That'd be a great idea.
So whoever, so whoever wants to make, I'll make the motion. I would like to move the acceptance.
No.
We haven't, you haven't had a motion.
We haven't approved this one yet.
We haven't moved, so you're doing the whole thing all along?
I'm doing the whole kit and caboodle.
Oh, the plaque, as well as this?
I'm going to move, apparently, I'll break it into two. I would like to move acceptance and expenditure of this donation as proposed for $1,436.75 pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8-15. So I'll stick with that first, I'll do the other motion second.
Motion by Nancy, seconded by Tom Thornton. Any further discussion, I'll call the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. 7-0-0.
I'd also like to propose that Crime Line, Merrimack Crime Line, be awarded one of our specialized appreciation plaques for their many years of, whatever the terminology is on the plaque, of.
We understand.
Dedication in service to the Town of Merrimack.
Dedication in service to the Town of Merrimack, sounds good.
Second.
Motion by Nancy, seconded by Barbara. Any further discussion? Peter?
I'll just, I, you know, I, with, all the work they've done for us over the years.
It's unbelievable.
Yeah, and I'd just say, maybe we could put this on the agenda and maybe, Captain, you could be our liaison and just ask them to, maybe we could set something up where they could come in and we could at least recognize them publicly with that.
Maybe I can make that amended part of the motion, in that we set up an agenda item for the actual presentation.
I was going to say, we'll do it like we did with DCU, invite them here.
Like we did with DCU, when we did DCU, we invited them here as an appointment to give them the plaque. We can do that.
Perfect. So I don't know if you had to add to your motion, if you.
Whatever.
Okay, don't add because then I don't have to bother Barbara, if she's good with it. So, all right.
I will not take a slide if you don't put it in.
No, it'll be on the agenda, I just, it can have to be part of your motion, I guess.
Perfect.
All right, I'll call the question, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstained. 7-0-0.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item number five under New Business, the council is to consider the nomination of Nelson Disco to be reappointed as a member to the Lower Merrimack River Local Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Motion by Council Boyd, seconded by Peter. That's as bad as EdCAC, though, I have to say, reading that off. Yeah, so.
I always like DRED.
Yes.
Department of Resources and Economic Development.
All right, is there.
Very, very quickly, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I mean, everybody knows Nelson and the number of years that he's dedicated to this community, and I know a month ago, I had talked about the need for volunteers and taking, you know, as related to the NRPC, people that volunteer, taking their role seriously, and there's one thing I think we all know and appreciate, that Nelson not only takes his role seriously, he is a, he's not a passive participant, he is a very active participant in these particular communities. So I really want to thank Nelson for stepping up again. I also want to thank Carolyn, his wife, for letting Nelson out of the house. I think that's very, very nice of her to let Nelson, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, Mrs. Disco, but seriously, you're a.
Probably might enjoy it.
That's true, too, but I just, you know, we appreciate a couple, we appreciate all the hard work that he's given this community, and I enthusiastically support the nomination.
Was it Bill and Peter? I don't remember who made that motion.
Peter.
Made the motion?
I made it.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought, I thought I had it, I just wanted to be sure. All right, is there any further discussion? Speaking none, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstained. 7-0-0. Item number six under New Business, the council is to consider the disposal of tax-deeded properties pursuant to RSA's 80:88, 80:89, 80:90, and Chapter 66 of the Town Code. And that's, let me get to that page. Yeah, you, please.
Unfortunately, we, we had to take a piece of property for tax-deeding, and that's this, this parcel, 33 Pearson Road. It's never anything the town wants to do for certain, and this is the opportunity for you to make decisions about what you want to do with the property. One would be to retain it, should you, you have use for it. The other one would be to sell the property at public auction, which we've done before. And people should keep in mind that once, once a piece of tax-deeded property gets sold at auction, that the, the initial proceeds or the top end of the proceeds go to the town for taxes and penalties and that kind of thing, and then they go to the lien holders and then they go back to the resident. So in years, when I first started in this business many years ago, it didn't even matter if a person owed a dollar in taxes, the town or city could take the whole property and own it and keep all the proceeds, so, and before the bank. So fortunately, they've changed that several years ago, but, so that's what, that's a decision for you to make.
Peter.
Eileen, you know, the council's had to discuss other properties in the past, and I know that the entire council doesn't take something like this, and I know you folks don't either lightly, it's not a comfortable thing to do. I'm just curious, and I don't know if we can bring that up in here, is the owner, we heard anything from the owner on any of this?
Actually, we made contact with them today. We were going over to do something over at the property and we noticed a vehicle in the par, in the, in the driveway, and the police made contact with them today.
And?
They have given them the paperwork and they have signed for the paperwork, and now there's other procedures we have to go through with taking this property over.
So is this, so are we on hold on this right now?
Oh, we're on, we are starting those other procedures with.
So we're on hold?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't know if I followed that, but are we?
Basically, what happens is we went through the exact process, we, we went through all the things, we get eviction notices and all that kind of thing, and all of it came back and no one responded and all that kind of thing. When they went to change the locks today, the, the owner was there, and so there's a different pathway you take once, if the, if the owner is, has been contacted. So that just happened today, and that changes this a bit in that there's, there's.
We have to follow additional steps.
Additional steps.
Did they have a conversation, or did he just accept paper, or she, he or she accept paperwork?
I, I do not know the extent of the conversation, hold on, this is.
Oh, it's you beeping over there, I thought you forgot to turn on that mic.
Yes. We do not know the exact conversation that was held between the Police Department and this individual at this time. We have to go through the courts to get another avenue to get that property and remove the tenants from that property.
Okay, so we still make this decision tonight?
Yes, you can still make this decision going forward, the property is not on hold, it's just a different avenue we have to proceed with before we can sell the property.
So he's been, he's, he's not in the house?
Don't know if he's in the house or not, he was there today and he was handed the piece of paper that he was supposed to be handed.
Sharon had gone by and saw his truck in the driveway, so the police went over in a last attempt to contact whoever it was, and they made contact, and that's all we know because it happened this afternoon, so we don't know any further details.
So.
Peter.
I guess, so I, not knowing his response, I mean, if this individual could come up with the money he owes the town, I guess I, I'm hesitant to want to support moving forward on this until we get a better response or something more solved.
Mr. Chair.
Paul.
He can retain the property and ask for the property back up till the time that we go to sell it. So he has up to the day of the auction to come to the council and say, "I have the money, I want to buy back my property." It's the auction day.
Right, which can happen in a month.
It's going to have to at least be three months out, three months out before, I'm He has 90 days to repurchase the property.
But he has to tell us in 30 days, I thought he had to, I thought I had read he had to come up with the money.
He has 30 days to tell us he's going to repurchase, he has 90 days to repurchase the property, and then after that, it would be going to auction.
You know, I'm, I'm extremely uncomfortable, I, actually, Bill wanted to speak, I don't know.
Is, is the house still furnished?
Yes.
Is the house in livable condition?
I don't, I don't know, it appears to be, I have not stepped foot on the property or near the property.
I think you may have a copy of the tax card, is that so?
I, I do, and it looks.
Looks like a pretty nice house.
It's a pretty nice house, which gets to my next question, what's not reflected in any of the information here is how, what, what's, how much does he owe, what's he in arrears on?
He owes at least three years of taxes.
Yeah.
Which is.
Plus penalties and interest and everything else.
Yeah.
For me, I'll tell you, I, I would like to know that we had.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to have an amount, I've been waiting, I'd like to have a rough idea of what he's.
I can tell you, I can't tell you the amount because I don't have it, but the point is, really, is that there's a procedure that has to be followed regardless of the amount by law in taking a piece of property. So I, I agree that from a philosophical point of view, it makes a difference to you whether or not somebody owes $100 versus whether they owe $30,000. But, you know, the, we can get you that information, but I, I think the, the process remains the same, that you must take property unless, unless there's something wrong with it, or if there's hazardous, or there are extenuating circumstances or that kind of thing.
And then the last question is, do we have to do anything tonight?
No, I don't think so, no.
I mean, we've got the deed, we don't, we don't have to.
I totally agree with you.
We don't have to do anything, we can let this thing sit and let it organically play out.
I totally agree.
Finley? I think the only thing I want to make clear, and I agree, I think we should table it or whatever we do, but I think the public needs to be aware that to get to this stage where it's in front of us and public notice, we will have dealt with this multiple years in non-private.
Correct.
And not public.
That's correct.
So it's not a matter, this has probably be four years' worth of not paying taxes, trying to notify, you know, that Diane Trippett is, you know, she's a moke, you know, she's really on top of.
Yep.
Being able to, you know, send certified mail, let's do it two or three times, let's send a police officer out, trying, so I think the public needs to know that whatever we just do, it's a very deliberate process that's been followed for a long time before it comes here. But I totally agree with this new information, I would like to table it until there's more information, but that's, I just want to make that clear.
Is that a motion?
Just the, before we get too excited and jump off the deep end here, please realize that we now own the deed to this property, so we are now liable for this property. If we just sit back and ignore it because we don't know what this guy's doing or whatever, then, then we're taking on a liability. So yes, we can wait two, three, six months to make a decision to do something, but we are responsible for it and have a certain liability, and I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a, a good thing for us to take position-wise. I'd prefer to go forward and say, "We sent him the notice that we're going to sell it, that starts the 90-day clock, he's got 30 days to respond that he wants to, to make good on it, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work," and just, just dragging it out, it's already been dragged out for three years. That's my opinion, thank you.
And, you know, you're absolutely correct. The only thing is, is that the, this doesn't start any clock ticking or stop ticking. It, what this does is just talk about what your intentions are. So basically, what hap, what happened today was that because the person was there, they can go to court and then we have to give them 30 days' notice to get out, even because we've contacted them. So we have to, so it's moved it up another 30 days, but we, we own it now, we'll own it 30 days from now, we'll own it for 90 days, and we'll have a liability for it all that time. So we have our property and liability insurance carrier come right over as soon as we take ownership, so it's already under our coverage.
Okay. But we do have it, a 90. We do have a 90-day period from when we send them a letter saying that we intend to sell, correct? We could start that clock anytime we want, they have 30 days after they receive that letter to let us know if they intend to repurchase it.
They've al, they, they have already received many letters, so the 30 days.
But they haven't received this 90-day letter saying that we intend to sell.
Right, because we haven't made that decision.
We haven't made the decision to send that yet.
So is this the first time we've actually contacted, made contact with these people?
That we physically made contact? We have been trying to make contact for a good three or four months.
Right, so we made contact with them, so what else was said after that? I mean.
They don't know.
What, what's the next step? Nothing? We don't know, he just shut the door and that was it?
I, I don't, I don't know what happened when the contact was made.
Right. They did that this afternoon, so that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just need to get more information of what happened this afternoon before I make any kind of decision on, on this at all.
Can we, understanding, Tom makes, Council Coney makes a great point, and this is, this is somewhat of a learning lesson for me, and Paul makes a point about the 30 days, but is this something that we don't have a lot of risk by waiting for our next meeting within two weeks to see if the homeowner makes any step or we get a little more information to, as to response? Just two weeks, is that, is that an unreasonable thought?
I'd just table it.
As Eileen pointed out, we've already got it covered under our liability insurance, so from that perspective, we can just hold it. But it, it just strikes me that we ought to make some kind of a legal effort to go forward. We've been working with this for three years, and it's gotten to this development point. I think we need to keep moving forward since we're here already, but if you want to wait another two weeks or two months.
I just, I'd just like to, to have information on what the problems was, was there, if illness, was there something, I don't know, you know.
Sending them a letter that we intend to sell doesn't change that at one bit, it just starts the clock running.
Okay.
Eileen?
I just sent Sharon a text, because she's the one that handles these for us, and I asked her if the council had to make a decision tonight, and she said no.
Right.
What you want.
That's right.
I'd like to make a motion to table to the.
This meeting?
You can table it.
I'll second.
Nancy's got a, Tom has to power on Nancy's mic.
That's, you have a job if you're willing to accept it. I'd like to make a motion to table this until next town council meeting. Hopefully, we will have more information from recent communication.
Yeah, and you know, and I'm willing to address this in two weeks, if we have a little more information and that's it. You know, again, great point, it's been three years and it's taken so long, and so.
Paul? Technically, there's a motion to table, there's no discussion, it's not discussable, discussion anymore, non-debatable anymore.
Non-discussible.
Yes, sorry, I don't mean to pull Robert's rules, but.
He thinks he's Bill Boyd right now.
He's channeling Bill Boyd.
All right. Motion, tabling motion on the floor, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstained. Abstained. Six one, six one zero with Tom Kenny voting in the negative. And what I'd really like is, if, if there's no conversation, then that means, because he definitely knows now, and if, if there's no conversation, if he's sitting there going, "I'm working hard. I should have whatever grand, whatever he needs in three months." I want to hear that. And, you know, so that's just whatever it is for me, so...
I won't be hearing, so...
But I'm suspecting that he's not wanting, but, okay. Next item on the agenda is the May twenty-fourth minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Thursday, May twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen Town Council Meeting Minutes as presented.
Second.
A motion by Councilboy, seconded by Councilor Albert. Who wants to start? Barbara, really?
Excuse me. On page three, line fourteen. It says that Councilor Albert commented that Governor Shaheen referred to this on Sunday. I don't know whether it was Senator Shaheen or Governor Sununu that you were talking about. I just wanted to get it straight.
It was Senator Shaheen.
Okay. So we can change that to Senator Shaheen? That'd be great. And then on, on page eight of fourteen, line twenty-eight, it talks about the, the goal with the assistance of the Catholic Church and the Knights of Columbus is to provide a day of awareness from eleven to seven, comma, American, comma, apple pie, comma, potato chips, and a cold drink for five dollars. And I just think he was talking about a hot dog, apple pie, potato chips, and a cold drink. But wasn't sure what American was in there for. Except that it's American, as apple pie might be a phrase that you might put together.
May I point a correction? There was no apple pie on the flyer.
On that flyer.
So I, I don't want to allude to there being apple pie, and there isn't.
Okay, so maybe we just drop out American apple pie and just say, "A hot dog, potato chips, and soda for five bucks."
I think it's two hot dogs, wasn't it?
Well, that's a picture on the flyers.
Oh, okay, we'll keep it simple.
Yeah, but Bob said apple pie, so...
Well...
He said apple pie.
Oh, that's where it came from, then.
Yeah, why would she write it down otherwise?
Well, I'm just, okay, I mean...
I hope they get apple pie.
I think, I think it's a good, I think it's a good question.
All right. Tom, you have anything further? No. Barbara?
Uh, yeah. On page three, oop, skip that one. Page five, line twenty-one. Uh, we were talking about the drug court here. And they had said that they had seventy, twenty-one terminations. And of those, seven who overdosed and passed, they were not in the program once they were terminated. So we, can we delete while in the program?
They had been terminated.
Wait, what?
That's right. The point, the point was that they had been terminated, and they went on to...
They passed.
Seven and overdosed and died.
Right.
Outside of...
Period.
Yeah.
I'm all for making it clearer if that's what applies.
Yeah, that's, it was.
On page nine, line twenty-six. CRF appropriate, would need to be revised. Wanted to ensure it was done in a way that did not disrupt the process. Who wanted it?
D R A.
Okay. So maybe we can just clarify that by putting D R A, and so it makes sense six months from now when we read it. And on page ten, line twenty-nine. It was changed a few times with amendments. More research needs to be done, but it does appear that the council was ever put on as agents to expend. I think the word we want there is never?
It does not appear that the council was ever put on.
Okay. Okay. So you think it makes sense the way it is? Okay.
You can clarify it, but...
Yeah, I meant, it was something I read like two or three times trying to...
It works the way it is. I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's...
I'm, that was it for me.
Bill? Nothing?
No, I, I read it. I've just been schooled by Councilor Haley.
All right. No, nothing further. I'll call the question on the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Seven zero zero. Comments from the press? Comments from the public? Comments from the council? Peter?
I just wanted to say that earlier this week, I, I attended a vol, dinner for the volunteers on Meals on Wheels. And I had a chance to sit with the volunteers from Merrimack. And there easily was about, I want to say, twenty individuals. People from town, faces and names we probably all recognize. And what a great turnout, what a motivated group, and we're lucky to have them. And I want to say thank you to those folks. And it was, I was kind of proud for my community that we had such a large number of individuals.
Thank you, Peter. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This'll, this'll be quick. This community is very lucky to have medical professionals, such as my wife and Councilor Harrington and Councilor Healy, who have dedicated their life to serving others through medicine. I say this because, over the last couple of weeks, I think we've all been struck by the, the deaths of Anthony Bourdain and Kate Spade, and how prolific that they have been for the certain people that have followed their certain genre, whether it be in fashion handbags, or in being a great writer and being a great chef. And I just want to let the community know that if, if, if you're going through a tough time with anything, call somebody. Call the police department, call the fire department, call a doctor, call a friend, call somebody. Because it's, you know, at, at the end of the day, there's so much to look forward to in this life, and you only got one crack at it. And it kind of hit me hard that two people with, with more money than God, with, with, you know, with prolific lives in their hands, would actually be in, in a dark area where they would do something that they, that they did. And it sats, and it saddens me. So I hope, in light of what we've talked about tonight, where we're talking about opioids and addiction and mental health in general, I do hope that we always encourage everybody in our community that they see something going wrong in the community, that they see something, say something, call Crime Line. But if, if you're dealing with some issues, we, anybody in town, your neighbor, St. Joe's, C M C, there's so many different venues and avenues where you can reach out and make a phone call, even if it's just to talk, talk to somebody. That's all I'm asking you to do, is just pick up a phone and talk to somebody, and somebody will be on the other end to pick up. So that's my public service announcement for the night. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Tom?
I just want to thank the council for their support for the Alzheimer's Program proclamation. It means a lot to me, and I know several others, as far as the impact it's had on our families directly. So I appreciate the support. I hope Merrimack does become more aware of the situation, and through the help of Bob Bergen and his team and, and other folks, that we can raise the awareness and support the folks that have Alzheimer's, and especially the folks that are living with that. Because the folks with Alzheimer's no longer know what's going on, as drastic as that is. The people that live with them, their loved ones, are the ones that are hurting the most. So thank you for that. Additionally, the Monday, there was a planning board regional roundtable held at NRPC, which was kind of fascinating. There were about twenty people showed up. And, and we talked about various things going on in the various different communities, and how we deal with issues, and what kind of issues we're dealing with. And it turned out to be a very good program. I thank Jay Moncaro for kind of spearheading, putting that together through NRPC. And the conclusion was that we wanted to do this more frequently. And so we'll probably have either biannually, or maybe even three or four times a year, these kind of roundtables put together. And at some point, he's probably gonna bifurcate it, Bill, to, to keep...
Oh, I'm having a heart attack right now.
To keep, to put together smaller communities versus larger communities. Because when Nashua and Merrimack were talking about their problems, the Wiltons and the, the, some of the other smaller communities were kind of feeling like, "We don't have that kind of program." You know, "We don't have the staff, we don't have the support." And so they have their own sets of issues that... But it was, it was a very good moving forward program to, to be able to help out people that are working on planning boards. Saying that, planning board is an interesting opportunity, and I'm glad I have that opportunity from you folks to, to attend. And I, I think there's always a frustration on the, the residents' part, thinking that the planning board has some kind of control over whether people should develop their land. And what we have is, is an ability to help them to follow the rules and regulations that have been established, and, and work with them to do things that keep it within the guidelines. But we can't stop them from doing things that they're legally allowed to do. But we can try to work with them and encourage them to help out and merge into the community as best as possible. And it works usually. Every once in a while, there's a situation where it doesn't work as well as we might like. So just keep that in mind when you're thinking about the stuff that the planning board and the zoning board are doing. We're trying to help the community. We're doing the best we can, and working with developers and people that own their property. And, and that ranges from an individual that wants to subdivide their lot, or start a, a home business, all the way up to, you know, two and three and five hundred unit complexes and things like that. So there's a wide variety of activities, including the Merrimack Premium Outlet that the planning board spends a lot of time working with. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Anything further? Seeing none? Motion to adjourn.
Second.